All right, good evening. I'd like to call the Zoning Board of Appeals for Tuesday, December 6th, 2022, to order. Will the city call the roll, please?
Mr. Havas?
Here.
Ms. Libbit?
President.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Friedman?
Here.
Ms. DeFoe?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Is there any communications?
None.
Not this time? Okay. So we will move into our public hearing. If you have not joined us, let me just briefly describe how we conduct business. The city will read a -- we'll call each case by the case number. The city will read a short summary of the case. Then we ask the appellant to step up to this podium, state your name and address for the record, and explain to us what you're asking for and why. I think there's also a sign-in sheet there if you'll sign in for us as well. Then the city will read the findings of fact. We'll ask you to agree with those facts or add any other facts at that time. And then the city will read a recommendation. We will ask if you have anything else to add at that point as well. We'll open it up to public comment on the case, then turn it over to the board to discuss, deliberate, possibly ask you more questions. So we just ask that you stay at the podium when it's your case. So will the city call the first case, please?
Yes, ma'am. Case 22-30, the appellant, Yanni and Nakama Klein owner, is requesting the following waiver from the board. One, a waiver to increase legal non-conforming front yard setback 39 feet seven proposed, 40 required. Number two, a waiver of lot coverage for an attached garage in addition to the rear of the home, 29.52 proposed, 25% allowed. The property is located on the south side of Alta Vista Drive between Woodville Place and Latherton Boulevard at 17093 Alta Vista Drive Sidwell Parcel number 24-24-329-011, zoned R2, single family. This appeal is to Chapter 45, Article 22, Section 5.193, Schedule of Regulations, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Great, thank you. Hi, good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good, good. My name's Zach Ostrov, 2640 Water Oaks Drive, West Bloomfield, Michigan, 48324. And I worked on the plans and representing my client, Yoni Klein, sitting right over here. Basically, we've got a small hardship. I know we're applying for two variances. The first variance is the setback to the front yard, which is 0.5 feet or six inches off of what the ordinance requires. It's existing. We're lining -- we're proposing to line up with the existing, so it's a pre-existing non-conforming. And the second variance is a slight -- we're asking for a little bit over the lot coverage to put the garage on and in addition. My client has just had his fifth child, needs a little more space. And the reason to move the garage towards Alta Vista is due to like a safety concern. He can't see his kids on the side right there. And on Woodvilla, he says that there's -- the traffic is a little bit heavy and he can't see his kids. So that's the purpose for the variance.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
Yes, ma'am. The appellant, Yanni and Nakama Klein owner, is requesting the following waiver from the board. A waiver to increase illegal non-conforming front yard setback 39.7 proposed, 40 feet required. Number two, a waiver of lot coverage for a new attached garage in addition to the rear of the home, 29.52% proposed, 25% allowed. The property is located on the south side of Alta Vista Drive between Woodvilla Place and Latherton Boulevard at 17093 Alta Vista Drive Sidwell Parcel number 24-24-329-11, zoned R2, single family. This appeal is to Chapter 45, Article 22, Section 5.193, Schedule of Regulations, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance. The properties to the north, south, east, and west are zoned R2, single-family residential, and are developed with single-family dwellings in the Sherwood Village sub. The field inspection of the surrounding area reveals the properties to the north, south, east, and west are mostly one-story, single-family -- excuse me, one two-story, single-family dwellings with a few two-story mixed in. The exteriors are made of mostly brick and siding. Most of the homes in the area have attached garages. The construction of the surrounding properties ranges from 1,400 square feet to 2,500 square feet. The surrounding properties are mostly conforming with lot size, setback, and lot coverage requirements. The subject property was built in 1961 and is a 2,375-square-foot ranch, single-family residence with an attached 506-square-foot, two-car garage on a full basement and is a legal non-conforming residence. The appellant proposes to construct a one-story, 232-square-foot addition on the east side of the residence and a 430-square-foot addition to the rear of the residence. The addition to the east side of the residence does not increase the legal non-conforming front yard setback of 39 feet seven inches. The appellant is requesting a waiver to increase a legal non-conforming front yard setback 39.7 feet proposed, 40 feet required, and a waiver for an increase in lot coverage for the addition to the east side of the residence and in addition to the rear of the residence, 25% allowed, 29.52% proposed.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add at this time?
Uh, no, I don't. I don't think so.
Okay. Will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
A .3-foot setback reduction for a legal non-conforming front yard setback, 40 feet allowed, 39.7 feet proposed. A 4.52% increase in lot coverage, 29.52 proposed, 25% allowed, with the following conditions. This is for a favorable consideration. The appellate secures all the required permits and clearances to construct a new addition to the residence in the city of Southfield. The new addition meets the requirements of the 2015 Michigan Residential Code. Due to the existing legal non-conforming residence on the parcel, the strict application of the ordinance would result in impractical difficulties and hardship to the owner and would not impair the intent and purpose of the ordinance. The requested waiver for setback and lot coverage are minor in nature and would not have an adverse effect upon adjacent and surrounding properties.
Great, thank you. This is now when we'll open public comment on this case. If there's anyone who wishes to speak, now is your opportunity to step forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Rogers?
I don't have a problem with either requests. I was curious where you have the proposed addition for the garage, the single-car garage. This is just from an architectural perspective. Is there a slab underneath there? So you're basically--
We gotta fill in the portion of the basement.
Okay, yeah, so you're--
Right.
You're taking the deck off and you're basically creating a whole new--
Right.
Foundation walls.
Correct, yeah.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Brianna, I think the door might be locked?
Thank you.
Somebody desperate to public a comment?
We gotta let them in, open meeting session.
Like I said, I have no problem with either requests. They're reasonable.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Libbit?
No problem.
Okay.
Reasonable request.
All right, thank you. Mr. Havas?
I have no problem either with either request.
Okay. Mr. Friedman?
I have no issues with it.
All right. I don't either. I think it's a minor request. Mr. Rogers, will you make a motion for us?
Sure. In regard to ZBAK's 22-30, the appellant, Yoni and Nakama Klein owner, is requesting the following waiver from the board. One, a waiver to increase illegal non-conforming front yard setback, 39.7 feet proposed, 40 feet required. Two, a waiver of lot coverage for a new attached garage in addition to rear of home, 29.52% proposed, 25% allowed. The property is located on the south side of Alta Vista Drive between Woodvilla Place and Latherton Boulevard at 17093 Alta Vista Drive Sidwell Parcel 2424-329-011, zoned R2, single family. I make a motion to approve both requested waivers. For one, a three-foot setback reduction for illegal non-conforming front yard setback, 40 feet allowed, 39.7 feet proposed. And two, a 4.52% increase in lot coverage, 29.52% proposed, 25% allowed, with the following conditions: that the appellant secures all the required permits and clearances to construct a new addition to a residence in the city of Southfield, and that the new addition meets the requirements of the 2015 Michigan Residential Code. I make this motion based upon the following: due to the existing legal non-conforming residence on the parcel, the strict application of the ordinance would result in impractical difficulties and hardship to the owner. It would not impair the intent and purpose of the ordinance. And two, the requested waiver for setback and lot coverages are minor in nature and would not have an adverse effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Your request is granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Will the city call the next case, please?
Yes, ma'am. Case number 22-35, the appellant, Philip Gist Jr., is requesting the following waiver from the board: to erect a six-foot fence beyond the side of the house along a double-frontage yard, 0% permitted, 30.5 proposed. The property is located on the west side of Abington Street between Winchester Street and Harvard Road at 27885 Abington Street, Sidwell Parcel number 24-15-328-001, zoned R2, single-family residential. This appeal is to Chapter 45, Article 4, Section 5.37-1, Paragraph C, Subsection 1D, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Great, thank you. Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. If you would each state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes. Philip Gist Jr., 27885 Abington Street.
Thank you.
Cheryl Gist, 27885 Abington Street, Southfield.
Thank you very much. Can you explain to us what you're asking for and why?
Uh, yes. We're trying to construct a new -- replace the fence that currently is there, okay? And so it, I guess, the new ordinance, the variance, and that's the reason why we're here, okay? And so I tried to get the contractor to come, but unfortunately they couldn't make it, so.
Okay, no problem. Anything you want to add?
Yes. Excuse me, babe. Hi. I don't usually speak. He does all the speaking. Okay, I stutter, so patience, please. We've lived there since '94. This fence has been there. We have fixed it up. And there are other fences in the area that are going up, and there's one right there beside ours that's new, is vinyl, is beige, and it looks nice. So we hired this like company, because we want -- we put on new roof siding, new windows, door. We're fixing up our property. So we've already paid half of this, which is $8,000. That's half. And now we find out that the fence that we have, we cannot put up a fence that size. We have to stop it way back here and then put a -- if we want something, either nothing there or a lower fence because of our side driveway. Now, we have raised our children, who we have grandchildren now, as you saw, one of them just left. We have a little basketball court there. Winchester is a thorough fair. Winchester, a lot of cars don't even stop at that stop sign. I stand there sometimes when I holler, "Stop sign!" They don't stop. Some of them do a rolling stop. It's a dangerous section. So if you're asking us to keep our basketball court if we want for our grandchildren but have a lower fence, the balls are going to be going out there. It's not safe, and we are corner house. Our grill, our big gas grill, when we went to grill, because it was just a fence, it wasn't closed in. When we moved there, we went out to grill, it wasn't there. He's asking me, "Cheryl, where's the grill?" Why are you asking me where's the grill? People have stolen things out of our backyard, the garage door. When a man leaves the garage door up, things have been stolen out of the garage door. So I'm saying this safety, safety, security. When we're in our backyard, I really don't want anybody looking in at me in the backyard. I don't want them looking in. These are granddaughters. I don't want them looking in at them, but I want them safe. So we -- okay, our driveway, we like the backyard all the time because it's just a natural thing in the backyard, because when I come out, I want to see. I've never had a problem not seeing. And so I am saddened by this because this is our family. This is our home. We take pride in keeping it up. It's a lot of area to keep up. It's a corner house, snow, grass. But now you're saying we cannot put up a fence, and the fence is already there. We just want to replace it with a beautiful, nice fence, not a wooden, older fence. And so I want to be grandfather in because we were already there. And it's for the safety of our family. We have a side like window there, and it's enclosed in a fence. But what you're telling us to do, it will not be enclosed anymore. It'd be exposed.
Sure. Yep, that's what we're here to talk about, so, yeah.
We'll feel vulnerable. I'll feel vulnerable when he's not there.
Yeah, I understand.
And that window is right there on the side of Winchester, Abington, where anybody -- and I know, I know that any kind of person comes down that street because they've stolen things out of our backyard. They've stolen things out of our garage. Mind you, I asked Philip not to leave it up. I'm going back out, put it back up when you go back out. But he's a man. He does what he wants to do. They -- his thing, he go in there and look for it, it's gone. They take things because it's right there. They see it. So I want us to be able to have our six-foot fence the way it's already there. We haven't had any incidences where we've had an accident coming out, where we haven't hurt anybody. We come out normal, slow, look. I can see when I come out. I just, I just hope that you all would listen to me and see that I need to feel safe. I need my grandchildren to feel safe. If I have that fence in there, they're in there playing basketball. I could be in the house because I think that they're in a locked-in gate. But if they're out there, then I'm gonna have to be out there. And I'm 64 years old. I don't want to be out there, okay? But still, and I want it safe. People drive so up and down. If you've ever been on Winchester, you know what I mean. They don't stop at the south side. Most people don't. So, um, think about that.
Perfect. No, that's great. Thank you. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
Yes, ma'am. Findings of fact for case 22-35, the appellant, Philip Gist Jr., is requesting the following waiver from the board: to erect a six-foot fence beyond the side of the house along a double-frontage yard, 0 permitted, 30.5 feet proposed. The property is located on the west side of Abington Street between Winchester Street and Harvard Road at 27885 Abington Street Sidwell Parcel number 24-15-328-001, zoned R2, single-family residential. The appeal is to Chapter 45, Article 4, Section 5.37-1, Paragraph C, Subsection 1D, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance. The properties to the north, south, east, and west are zoned R2, single-family residential, and are developed with conforming, single-family dwellings in the Evergreen sub number two. Field inspection of the surrounding area reveals the properties to the north, south, east, and west are mostly two-story, single-family dwellings and a few one-story dwellings mixed in. The exteriors are made of mostly brick and siding. Most of the homes in the area have attached garages. The surrounding corner lots are mostly legal non-conforming with fencing that comes beyond the side setback and lot coverage requirements for double-frontage lot. The subject property was built in 1967 and is a 2,515-square-foot, two-story, single-family residence on a full basement with a 506-square-foot attached garage. The appellant proposes to erect a six-foot vinyl privacy fence beyond the setback for a double-frontage lot, 0 feet permitted, 32 feet proposed.
Great, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Uh, I do.
Okay.
Okay. And again, you know, my wife wanted to make sure that she got her two cents in to make sure you fully kind of understand. The way it's constructed now, even though that the contractor drew it right, and I maybe, I didn't fully understand when he did the drawings that it wasn't going to, you know, replace the whole fence. I do understand now, okay? And hopefully would, you know, wish that you guys would consider, you know, grandfathering, you know, us so we can complete our fence the way we like. And if not, okay, I like to just, if I can't do that fence there, I like to do the back and the other side, okay? And I'll leave that the way it is. If you're saying, no, we can't, then I just can't, you know, I can't do it the other way because of, just from a security standpoint. My wife explained all that to you, so. So I'm hoping that you guys kind of consider that.
Okay. Will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Yes, ma'am. Staff recommendation is for favorable consideration of the following waiver for a six-foot-high vinyl privacy fence 32 feet zero inches beyond the side of the house with the following conditions: the appellant provides a boundary survey with stakes to identify the property lines. Number two, the appellant installs the fence as per the contractor, Anchor Fence Inc., proposed, location at the northwest corner of the residence and not where the existing fence is along the driveway as it creates a hazardous condition to pedestrians and traffic. Number three, the appellant apply for the required fence permit and comply with all other fence requirements. This recommendation is based upon the following: the new fence will replace illegal non-conforming wood fence, and the strict application of the regulations would result in practical difficulties to the owner of this property. The proposed fence with the proposed conditions is in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and would not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties.
Okay, thank you. Anything you want to add right now before we open?
I think we covered everything.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, so may I speak?
Yeah.
So Philip handled all of this, all the business. He didn't realize that, that among -- when they wrote that, that--
Drawing.
-- drawing, that it did not cover all of our fence. When I saw it and it was angled, I thought, I thought among, it was like angle at the corner. It's a little, little bitty angle. I thought that's what it was talking about. But they're down here. We didn't realize that. And so that's why we're here, now that we know. And since, since we've given the money a long time ago, I don't even know if they're going to even give us a refund if we don't do it. So I just, they said, he stated that this is a hazard, but it hasn't been. I've been there since '94, August. We've never had an issue. We've never had an incident there. So it may appear to be a hazard on paper, but it has not been. In rain, sleet, snow, sunny weather, it just hasn't been. And I just wish you all would consider grandfathering us in since this changed in 2015. Now, had it been some incidences, then I would say, okay. But it hasn't been. And I really hope you all have mercy on us.
Okay, so we'll open public comment. I don't see anyone here, so we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Friedman?
Um, you know, the findings of fact, the recommendations say that it's per the proposed location and not where the exact fence is. Do we have a, you know, and I looked at the proposal there, but I'm having a hard time understanding exactly how much the difference would be between the angle, because they do have an angle now. And, you know, it's not, it just says the way that it's proposed. What is the difference between the angle they have now and the angle that the drawings propose?
I don't see the angle on the, on the current fence that's there. The angle we're referring to is over by the garage, which allows sight to the road, Winchester.
Yeah, so it is angled a little bit. It doesn't go to, it doesn't make a point the way they have it now. So, yeah, there's the picture right there. It is angled a little bit. And we're talking about angling it more.
Yes, it's--
So, so do we have, do we have a number on what that angle is and what?
I don't have the degrees. I could probably do the math on that.
Okay, because it already is, is, you know, we're obviously worried about pedestrians there and--
Correct.
-- being a hazard. And so, you know, I just want to know how much more, how many more feet we'd be cutting off. You know, I'm inclined, their grandfather, you know, as he says, if he gets a waiver, you know, he can leave the old fence there. So I'm inclined to grant it to him. And I, you know, additionally, I don't see why a boundary survey, a boundary survey with stakes is needed. There's no indication that they're beyond the levels of the property. They have a fence there right now. If they want to replace it with a new fence, I'm all for it.
Okay. Mr. Rogers?
Well, just to add to what Mr. Friedman just said, I think whenever you replace a fence in its entirety, that you should want a boundary survey, perhaps just for legality. Perhaps the one that's existing is off. And here's your chance to correct that.
I think there's a difference between these fine people getting themselves a boundary survey and us requiring that they do so.
Right, I mean, right. We can't require it, but it isn't a bad idea, is all I'm saying. As far as, I have no problem with allowing you to replace this whole fence with a brand-new fence according to the way Anchor Fence has it. It's angled enough so that you can pull out of the driveway and see pedestrians or other cars coming on. So I would be in favor of this.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Libbit?
The question that I had was that the drawing shows 30.5 feet proposed by, by the anchor, I believe. And then the finding of fact, the staff is recommending a 32-foot fence. Could that be the difference, this angle that's being talked about? Because that was the thing that I noticed that was different in the drawing.
It's the angled measurement, though.
The 30.5 is the angled measurement or the 32 is the angled measure?
No, it looks like the 32 is how far away it's going from the house to--
To the--
-- to the outermost part of the fence, parallel to Winchester.
Okay, that's what I was, I was trying to understand in, in what they were saying. But yes, I think anytime anybody wants to, A, increase the security around their home and B, certainly that would add value to their home. So I would not have any problem. I just want to make sure that what they're asking for, because they're talking about grandfathering in something, is actually what is drawn, is the proposed anchor fence.
And my understanding is that it's not.
That's correct. That's what I keep hearing.
Right.
See, we actually want to, we want to replace that fence the way it is right now, okay, with a vinyl fence. And my thing is, and I do understand the ordinance, I respect-- And my thing is, and I do understand the ordinance, I respect the, you know, the new ordinance, um, but I, I have to, you know, look out for my family, okay? And security is, you know, it's the number one thing. So if we could not replace that part of the fence, because we're doing the fence all the way, all the way around. And I'm asking is that, can I just leave that? And I'll, you know, I'll update it, I'll paint it, and I'll replace the other fence in the back and the other side. I would, I would love to do it all the way around. But my understanding is that if I do that, I have to bring it into code.
So the recommendation from the city-
Right.
-is that you can still bring it out to Winchester, but that the angle is a little, I think, more, we don't know. That's really our question. We don't know what the difference is between the current angle you have now and what the angle is that I think Anchor drew, because they know generally what the city requires-
Right.
-and what the city staff is requesting.
Right.
Now, the board has its own authority, different than the ordinance, which is why you're here to ask for a variance from the ordinance. And that's, I think, kind of what we're trying to, you know, ascertain is, is what the difference is between what you, you know, where your angle starts now versus where Anchor has drawn the angle to start, which is at, what, like twenty-four feet out?
They're cutting off, well, I think he's suggesting is that he'd rather have it right up against the driveway there.
But is the-
Anchor's showing it all the way to the back of the house-
Right.
-parallel to the house. So he's saying he'd rather leave that section there so it stays along the side of the driveway and just replace the back and the other side of the home. And then he will deal with the, you know-
No, sir, he's, he doesn't rather that. But if you all do not let us change it, then that- This right here shows you what, what the, the, like, difference is, if you, like, want to see it.
Sure, why don't you bring up what you have, so we can- Oh, is that the same thing we have?
Yes, the same.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I guess.
I thought you had just drawn something, okay.
No.
So where's your fence now?
It's clear, my fence is right here. That's, that, this is, this, this is where my fence is.
Okay.
Uh, Jody?
That's an angle.
Okay.
Uh, could you just turn the microphone so the recorder picks her up? Thank you.
Our fence is right here, right here, okay? Garage is right there, and it comes here, that there's a gate. And this is our fence, right there, and it comes here. They're saying they want to stop it back here with the, with, with the house. Our basketball court is right here, which means it'll be exposed.
Okay. That's a whole different, that's a whole different-
But that's a big difference.
Yeah.
You know, sure.
Fence stops here. The fence stops here and the angle's there, then it goes there, that's a gate. And I have a basketball court right here.
Right. Uh, there, there is a third option, and that is, you know, I don't know why the city is stopping you at the end, at the end of your house there. But if, if you have an angle such as, you know, taking the fence to, uh, to your driveway as far as it goes and putting an angle like you have, just slightly bigger-
Bigger angle.
A bit, a little bit, bit of bigger area, because that, that I think is what the city's trying to accomplish. I don't think they're trying to, because we've, 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 uh, we've approved fences before and we've been worried about the angle of the pedestrians and the cars coming out. So they were, the, the city in the past has suggested a certain amount of feet, and that's why I'm surprised I don't, I didn't get the difference here. They, they, I don't think anybody in this board, and I don't want to speak for them, but I don't think any of the board has an issue with the fence going to your house, to where you have it right now.
Yes.
I think-
Just with a bigger angle.
I, yes, I think the concern is that, that, and we generally have that concern when a, when a fence becomes along the driveway, that it is angled like you have it there, but usually just a little bit bigger.
Okay.
So, so, I, you know, I think that's what the city's concern was. Um, not that you push the fence back further away from the driveway, but that that angle so that your cars can see the pedestrians is just a little bit bigger than it is there. So I think, I certainly would be inclined, uh, because you have a fence there, to even give you exactly what you have.
Okay.
Um, but what, what I think the ci- city was proposing is just a bigger angle, or it was what the city was worried about, was just a bigger angle there. And I don't know what the city's general, um-
Normally, it's, it's about forty-five degrees. Uh, you can make it less, twenty-two and a half.
But, but where does it start? Um, I mean, they, they wouldn't want to go forty-five degrees.
Oh, you mean, um-
Yeah.
We, we chose the, the point forward from the gate.
What's that?
Because there's a gate drawn in there.
There's a gate on it.
Gate drawn in there. Um, so I mean-
One car length.
I think the thing we've seen in the past, if I'm not mistaken, was fifteen feet away from the driveway at the closest to the street portion.
One car length away from-
What's that?
One car length outside the garage.
Is that fifteen feet?
Yes.
Yeah. So what, what, what they normally propose is fifteen feet away from your driveway down Winchester and then a forty-five-degree angle.
Okay.
Um, and that is what they proposed in the past. And then it could be, you know, fifteen feet there, forty-five-degree angle, and then straight to where it is right now.
Okay.
Would that be something that, that you guys would be?
Oh, yeah. I think we can, we can work with it.
Could that encapsulate the, uh, the basketball court?
It would, it would cut a, it would cut, it would cut the corner a little bit more than it is now.
Cut the corner a little bit, but you might have, that might be your compromise.
Right, and, um-
If you're willing.
If, yes, if we, if we can do that, yeah. We can leave it, because that would be a lot of-
So-
I just need to know-
How would we amend that?
I would, I'd, I'd be glad to make a motion.
So we're gonna, but, but we can't, we wouldn't be using the drawing that they-
Right, I think they're basically replacing what's there with a forty-five degree angle.
We're replacing what we have there with a forty-five-degree angle at that corner that is, needs to start fifteen feet from the, uh, west of the driveway.
The, the city would require, the building department would require any changes to this drawing from Anchor Fence as an additional requirement.
Yeah, it would be required as part of the fence permit, right.
A new, a new drawing.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I would, I would have, I would want that myself. So I would, I'll, I'll talk to Anchor tomorrow if, if we all agree and have them come out and do it.
And maybe walk it out with you so you have a full understanding of how much of the, the court you might be losing.
Yeah, how, how far is it? Do we have on this drawing, how far is it from here to there?
That's at the thirty-two.
That's thirty-two. So if we went fifteen and fifteen, you know, that would be, if it was a forty-five-degree angle, that would be, you'd still leave them fifteen feet this way, okay?
Okay, Mr. Havis, did you have any?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm fine with, with the-
With the discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Any other questions before we make a motion? Any other concerns? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Friedman.
Uh, the appellant, Philip Gist Jr., is requesting the following waiver from the board. Direct a six-foot fence beyond the side of the house along a double-frontage yard. Zero permitted, uh, thirty point five proposed. Or is it thirty-two? Would the city have the two different ways?
Yeah, there are two different numbers in there.
That's where you were saying that there are different numbers.
That's what I was saying. Thirty-two is there and thirty point five-
Thirty point five.
On that drawing, so it was, it was-
It's thirty-two, okay.
Okay, again, uh-
One more time.
Mr. Gist is requesting the following waiver from the board. Direct a six-foot fence beyond the side of the house along a double-frontage yard. Zero permitted, thirty-two proposed. The property is located on the west side of Abington Street between Winchester Street and Harvard Road at two seven eight eight five Abington Street. Sidwell Parcel Two Four One Five Three Two Eight Zero Zero One. I move that we grant the waiver to, uh, have the fence built along the lines of the fence that currently is, except for at the corner of the driveway. With the angle that currently exists, the, the fence must, uh, uh, be angled at forty-five degrees starting fifteen feet from the driveway to, west of the driveway. And, um, for, uh, the fence is, is proposed to be a six-foot-high vinyl privacy fence, um, thirty-two feet beyond the side of the house. And I approve, we grant that with the condition that the corner is, uh, angled at forty-five degrees and starts fifteen feet from the driveway.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so your request is granted. Continue to work with your vendor and the city on your permit. Um, and as the city already stated, your permit will require a new drawing.
Right, a new drawing, right.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome, have a nice evening.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, so then we have, will the city call the next case, please?
The next case has been postponed.
Um, we still call it and then we'll make a motion to postpone, please.
Uh, it's, next case, third, is twenty-two dash thirty-four. Uh, the appellant, Andrew Zielke of Blue Ranch Holdings LLC, owner, is requesting the following variances from the board. A variance of two thousand nine hundred seventy-one square feet of front yard landscaping along Southfield Road. Four thousand nine hundred and eighty square feet required. Two thousand nine square feet proposed. Number two, a variance of eleven point eight feet of side yard landscaping along Windflower. Fifteen feet required, three point two feet proposed. The property is located on the east side of Southfield Road between Edwards Avenue and Windflower Drive at, at Southfield Road. Sidwell Parcel Number two four one two dash one fifty-three dash zero one nine. Zoned B three, general business.
Great, thank you. And my understanding is there's a request to postpone this case to a date uncertain at this time? All right.
So through the chair to the board, this case did go through counsel and was denied. So they may rework the site plan and go back. We, we haven't had an answer from the appellant, so that's why we're requesting a date uncertain.
Okay, can I have a motion to postpone case twenty-two thirty-four to a date uncertain, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, uh, that closes our public hearing. Uh, next on the agenda is approval of minutes from November first. Uh, does anyone have any comments to those?
Move approval of the minutes as written.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, minutes for November first are approved. Uh, then, uh, looks like we have a meeting coming up on December twentieth with two cases. Is there anything?
So those are, will be the only two cases?
Okay, sounds good. Um, any questions about the meeting on the twentieth? Everybody in town and around? Okay. Um, all right, then, now I think as we discussed, this is our, uh, we move into our annual meeting, which includes elections of officers of the chair and secretary.
Make a motion to keep them.
Second.
They do such wonderful work.
Am I the secretary?
Yes.
I've been doing that, but they do-
Through the chair to the board. He's the unofficial secretary.
I'm not, I have not, I have not been appointed secretary, I've just been-
The actual nomination.
I nominate Mr. Friedman to be secretary of our zoning board.
Is this the only duty of the secretary?
It's been seconded, no.
That's the only duty of the secretary.
Okay, then I, then I-
All right, all those in favor to, uh, keep the officers, uh, myself, his chair, and Mr. Friedman as secretary? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next up is the calendar for next year. Um, did anybody have any concerns about any of the dates at this point? I mean, I, I, you know, I thought if ever needed, we can always cancel if there's, you know, too many meetings, right? If ever a problem to do that. It's more difficult to add than cancel.
So to answer your question, yes. And we might get bumped this, you know, this year. I did as much as I could to prevent that, but it's always a possibility. And then we, our first meeting, we got bumped, so-
Oh, okay.
It was scheduled for January sixteenth, and I'm just gonna bump it to the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
I believe I have maybe one or two cases for that meeting, so I, I'm pretty sure it's gonna happen. As long as all of you are available.
So we're just gonna move everything to the twenty-fourth? So just one meeting in January?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right, um, I don't, we do actually need, I think, do we need a motion to approve the calendar? I think we usually do. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the calendar as, with the dates presented?
So moved.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Um, oh, and we kind of dealt with the third item as part of the second calendar item. Uh, and then, um, rules of procedures. That's, I guess, does anybody have any pending questions, concerns, discussion points? Bring up your point again.
I just had the, 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 you know, when I mentioned, um, the, uh, the amount of things that people are required to, to, uh, submit in print. My question was, I, I, while we have been not requiring the full amount, I think it's still in the rules and procedures, the full amount, um-
The twelve or something?
The twelve copies. I think that's still, so, so I was wondering if we could perhaps amend the rules to, to, uh, I mean, it may, somewhere down the line, limit us. Um, but, but, uh-
And that was decided last year, so we don't need to make a motion for that.
We don't need to make a motion?
No.
Okay, anybody else see anything that they wanted to change? Or, I mean, I think their meetings are running smoothly. I think we're helping the, you know, the, the appellant along and, and I, I think the changes we made a few years ago have made a difference for them. So I don't have any need to change anything. Any thoughts from any other boards you've set on in procedure?
Nope, not at all, actually.
Okay, perfect. Um, yep, then I, I guess we don't have any further review of the rules. So, all right, so then I guess we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, meeting adjourned.